... light is on there and welcome this evening, everyone. Would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A Mary, roll call.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here. Okay, first on the agenda this evening for scheduled business is a first reading of ordinance, so Jim, would you like to read the first readings on page four?
Okay. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code and zoning map by amending the Development Code text related to redemption centers, adopting findings and declaring emergency.
Move that the ordinance be read a second time in title only.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code and zoning map by amending the Development Code text related to redemption centers, adopting findings and declaring an emergency.
Would you like a motion so you can have discussion?
It's the adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so council, you've got questions of staff, we have David here, questions of city attorney, what's your... Rich?
The day after we passed this first time, next morning at 3:14 a.m., my eyes focused as I woke up and I couldn't go back to sleep. At one...I kept feeling like my magic decoder ring had missed something. And I say that in jest, but realistically, it's like I felt like I didn't have enough information that we came to the conclusion we came to. At 4 o'clock, I went down, got in my car, went down and looked around to see if there was anything that I could see that would explain it for me, and it didn't. I was on the short end of the vote and it concerns me that we are rejecting a business because they don't fit into specific parameters, specifically that they do most of their business outside of the area. When I looked around, I could not find a realistic business that did their business on the inside of the area. I mean, if you look around, I mean, extreme graphics, I would seriously doubt that he would be in business a month if he had to do his business inside the area. And that would be the same problem that we had with this redemption center. I mean, I don't know with, in the case of legacy ballet, if you had to do all your business with just people who lived inside or the majority of people who lived inside, I don't think you'd be in business. Now, I may be wrong there, but it just didn't seem reasonable. What concerns me is we seem to have a system where there are people that we like and there are good reasons to like them, but they don't seem to have to abide by the same rules that we're asking other people to abide by. I heard testimony that it was going to be noisy, but there wasn't any evidence. I heard testimony that there were security concerns. Well, as long as Main Street is there and as long as the river is at one end and kind of helping hands is kind of at the other end, you're going to have people traveling in between until the whole area gets changed, so that's not where homeless people go. It just bothers me that when looked at from the outside, we are going to appear to be something less than uninterested in who the people are that come before us. And for that reason, I oppose this.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, roll call.
Paulson.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kellum.
No.
Kupczynski.
No.
Coburn.
Yes.
That's four yes, two no.
Okay, all right, the motion's carried. Okay, thank you folks. And next is business from the public. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? Yeah, Greg?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Uh-huh. I'm sorry, I gotta read this notice of decision, thank you. Hang on just a sec. So this is just one of these little legalities we have to follow, so. Within five days of the decision, the community development director provides written notice of the decision to the applicant and any other parties entitled to notice. A decision of the city council may be appealed to the land use board of appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Okay, all right, got that taken care of, so now business from the public, so Greg.
Okay, I apologize for kind of derailing a little bit this evening, I'm actually not here, surprisingly, about the zoning. My name is Greg Bechtel, last name spelled B-E-C-H-T-E-L. I live at 978 Ferry Street Southeast here in Albany. I am the chief financial officer of Albany Alternative Health Solutions. I apologize for sitting tonight, I generally don't do that, I came from the construction on our building and my legs are kind of hurting, so I'm gonna hunker down. Thank you, thank you very much. I sent an email, but I wanted to come in here and personally thank you guys for making the right decision and listening to the planning commission or their recommendation. For those that haven't been following the recent state developments, the Senate Bill 1531 is kind of working its way through the process to allow for municipalities to provide additional reasonable regulations for medical marijuana dispensaries. As you all know, I own, hopefully, the first medical marijuana dispensary in Albany, we still have to get our state licensing, but compliance to us is very important. The problem is that the state is only hiring or has only hired four auditors, and it's based on the assumption that there's going to be between 100 and 150 dispensaries that are going to apply in March. We think that's woefully inadequate. We think that four auditors will not be enough by a mile and a half. We think there's probably going to be about 300 dispensaries that are going to apply. Why is this a problem? The reason why this is a problem is because it's not enough, so it's going to fall to local municipalities to ensure compliance, which comes with an added cost and added burden. We don't think that's fair. And I know it probably sounds a little unusual coming from a dispensary owner asking for more regulation, but remember, we are patient oriented and we want to protect our patients first. We suggest that because this added burden and added cost falls to local municipalities, that the City of Albany enact what we are calling a dispensary compliance fee, which could help offset these additional costs. For example, law enforcement, basically inspections, compliance inspections. The auditors are just not going to be able to do it at the state level. And if we want to maintain an atmosphere in Albany, for example, like our dispensary, we operate as a professional business based entirely around taking care of patients. We love this model. We want to see more dispensaries like us and less like those that I've mentioned when I've come before this council before out of Portland. I love the city and I want to maintain that atmosphere. Dispensaries should contribute to their local communities, and Albany already has the infrastructure to handle the backend of that. Essentially, the way I see it is it's basically a water bill for dispensaries. I pay my water bill right down the hall, I don't see why a dispensary can't pay an additional dispensary compliance fee, same building, et cetera. Now, along with that, we recommend a small monthly fee as opposed to the state fee, which is a one-time, once-a-year fee that is kind of big, it's $4,000 for the state license. If the state were to break that up, it would be a lot easier for dispensaries to be able to afford that if it was like a monthly kind of service fee, if you will. We suggest between $100 to $200 monthly fee for the City of Albany that will come from us to the City of Albany to offset us and all other dispensaries, that will offset any additional costs that may come from additional compliance that may fall as a burden for the city. Now, along with that, there are neighborhood concerns with dispensaries, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm a patient, I've been to some dispensaries that I will never go back to again, and there is a legitimate concern about dispensaries and neighborhoods, et cetera. Dispensaries are a business, businesses shouldn't be in neighborhoods. We, although we like the idea that we can move in next door to you and you would never know that we're a dispensary unless you recognized our name, not all dispensaries are going to be like that. And because of that, it has been, is bandied around with this body before for 300 feet buffer from residential. We have no problem with that. And it's actually been cited that that's what the city does for adult shops, which while we don't think that adult shops and dispensaries should be put in the same category, dispensaries should not be marginalized or seen as equivalent, but businesses should be clumped together. It makes policing them easier and it's essentially just better for a city model, in our opinion. As such, a 300-foot buffer from residential zones is not prohibitive for dispensaries. We recommend that if that would help our opponents in Albany and throughout the state to kind of feel better that dispensaries are in their city, but you know, they're not right next door, we're okay with that, and we would not oppose that at all. In fact, as I've mentioned many times, the geography of Albany is such that putting this buffer dramatically will decrease the number of dispensaries that can even open in Albany, which is not in the state bill. As a business owner, putting on my business owner hat, that's a good idea for me. But as a patient, patient access should still always be at the fore, but then we have to also provide for our neighborhoods. 300 feet is not going to be a bad thing. So we have no problem with that, and we actually advocate that there should be some kind of additional buffering so that we can have dispensaries kind of where the police know where we're at, so they can keep us safe. Lastly, and bringing up the police, in the times that I've spoke to Albany Police Department, one of their biggest concerns and one of our biggest concerns, again, I'm putting on my patient hat, is redistribution points. Dispensaries have a stigma that there is a potential for redistribution. That is a huge concern of ours, and we have taken a lot of things internally to prevent that so that we're very transparent that that is not the kind of shop that we're going to run. Again, I can't speak for all dispensaries. To wit, I think Albany, and I, I mean, you know, AHS as a representative of them, I don't think that the regulations with the state law are going far enough regarding persons responsible for facilities, they're called PRFs. We think that there should be provisions in Albany that specifically prohibit the ownership, operation, or a person responsible for a facility in Albany if they have distribution charges regarding marijuana. Because our logic is simply that they've done it before, now they have an actual storefront, the potential there is very, very great, and as a member of the community, is this really something, and not just the Albany community, the OMP community, is this really something that we want to have our name on? And the answer is no. Responsible patients are for additional regulation, we've always said that, and preventing criminals from running dispensaries is not a bad thing at all. But again, patient access should always be first priority, but protecting our neighborhoods from potential for abuse is, should be a close second. That's kind of my spiel tonight, I'm sending, I sent those three things around to you guys, and I apologize, I wanted to come see you on the work session on Monday to kind of give you a couple of days to kind of mull this over and, you know, talk amongst yourselves or whatever, and reject it entirely if you want to, but you know, I'm throwing the, I'm kind of throwing that idea out there, because we're always trying to be ahead of the eight ball on this, and with that Senate bill coming down, you know, I want to make sure that you guys understand that there are additional options, we're okay with options, you know, we don't want to fight, you know, we're here, we will be opening March 3rd, all of our ducks are in a row, we're ready to go, and March 2nd, we want to specifically invite this body to come at any time, March 2nd. We will not be open to the public, we will not be open to OMP patients, we will only be open to those of you, you know, on this panel, the decision makers about whether or not, you know, we're going to have to deal with additional regulations down the road, to come see what you're talking about. Come walk through our building, you know, see what we do, and then you'll have a better informed decision. We've been saying this all along, you know, come give us a look, and then make a decision based on what you see. So that's all I have tonight, as usual, I'm open to any questions if anybody has any.
Can I clarify one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Greg would be, because you're saying the dispensary compliance fee, that's additional on top of the state?
Yes, ma'am, that is, I think, and whenever I say aye, I'm speaking as a representative of the company. We adopted kind of a, an authorization for me to come before this board and say, the City of Albany, we recommend as a dispensary and people in the community, that the local town of Albany has, there's no problem throwing an additional fee because there's not going to be the auditing from the state, there just isn't. And it would take a very disingenuous person to say that they're concerned about the state auditing. It's just not going to happen. They have four people to do 300 dispensaries, and the list of compliance, I mean, guys, it's crazy long. We probably, we might, because you know, we're kind of in the paper, but I think most dispensaries won't even get a visit in their first year. And that's concerning, that's problematic. I mean, we're following the rules, but I can't speak for everyone, and I am a patient and I am a citizen of Albany, you know, before I'm a business owner, so. I mean, that's our chief concern, you know, we just want to make sure that people are following the rules like we do, because this is important. We don't want, we don't want that stigma, we're tired of it, we're tired of being treated like criminals and it's just ridiculous.
And you're saying Senate Bill 1531 right now is just kind of in limbo.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. As of, when the Senate Bill was passed through the Senate, they had amended it to allow the local municipalities to add additional reasonable restrictions, but not to ban. And then it went to the House and it kind of got readjusted, and now banning is back on the table, but it has not yet been passed. From what I'm garnering, I don't think it's likely to come out of this session with a decision, so again, we're back to where we were in October. Who knows where the, you know, where the ball's going to land, you know? So I, again, trying to be out in front of the eight ball on this for, as the corporation, we want to make sure that the city knows that if you want to put additional regulations, we've said it all along, reasonable, we're totally fine with, and we actually have a few ideas of our own. So we made this reference to the MPAA, the Motion Picture Association, we have no problem policing ourselves.
Well, I really appreciate this and, you know, working with this on this too.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any questions, Greg, on this proposal? Okay?
Yeah, I can't stress enough, please, please come out March 2nd, please, we've put a ton of work, I mean, we put a ton of work in the building, we really want to showcase it to you guys.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Yes, Tom?
Please do not adjust the mic.
Don't touch ours either.
Thank you. Well, I guess I'm a dollar short and a day late to bring information relating to the decision to not allow the redemption bottle processing plant to locate in the Salvation Army Building. I somehow thought that the public comment would, although it's not part of the public hearing process...
Hearing was closed last week.
I hear you.
So we can't take any more testimony before a decision.
That's fine. I'll do this then. I'll just say that several councilmen today received in their emails, a two-page email that was developed by Michael Rourke, who is the owner of Moore Inc., that is located in the Plaza, the Carriage, what's it called?
Carriage House Plaza.
Carriage House Plaza, I can't remember the name, house. And where he surveyed the 15 or 16 residents of that plaza. And I've, and he wrote up a deal where he surveyed the people in the mall and saying, concluding that they wanted the recycle center there, in the building, as proposed. And so what I bring to you tonight is the observation that the, the public hearing notification process is insufficient. And I don't want to hear all the stuff that you do, what I'm telling you is that the John Q. Public out there doesn't know about the hearings, okay? And I've talked personally to just about every business owner, not the landowner, but the business owner that's in that plaza. They didn't know anything at all about a public hearing, had not any information at all about the quasi-public hearing that you had on the 12th of February, didn't know anything about the decision, the tentative decision to deny the company the opportunity to come in there and place a business, didn't know about it. And you can say what you want to say, but that's the evidence, that's not an opinion, that's the evidence that the public notification process that you're using is insufficient. The other part of that is that when they find out about the decisions that are on the table, the people that Michael polled don't agree with your decision, don't agree with it. And the reason is similar to what Hassel Haring testified at the, at the Planning Commission meeting, where he said, he believed a center like this would vastly increase the number of containers being recycled, which outweighs the Main Street zoning issue, the property's in a blighted area, and the old Salvation Building doesn't do anything to enhance the area. He concluded that extra traffic may actually bring business for neighboring businesses. And that opportunity to attract more business into that mall is what the business owners that are in that mall want. They want more traffic. And so, I mean, I could, is the council, is the council really aware that that company was going to spend $350,000 of its own money to renovate that building?
Yeah.
They want to buy it, invest their own money, not Cara money, not public money, they want to invest their own money in that business opportunity, and you guys have said no. It's crazy. We talk about Albany wanting to be a business-friendly community, that's words, the actions speak louder than words. I spoke to Stephanie today, and she was totally shocked and dismayed at the council's decision on 12th of February. Totally dismayed. The other issue is, what I was told was that, well, the city is trying to find another location in the city for that business. If they are, Stephanie doesn't know that. She has not been told that the city is looking for alternate locations?
That's not true. So we're not in the business for going out finding other all locations, so that's up to them, so.
That's what she told me, that the city is not looking for a location for her business. And what you're saying is that's true. Okay.
It's not our role to be out there looking at that.
But see, what's out there, Mayor, is, well, the city said no to that location, but it would be willing to look at other locations, and we're trying to help them do that. That's what came back to me, and it turns out it's not true. And they have a realtor, commercial realtor, looking for properties and quote, "there aren't any available," meaning for sale, in Albany. So here we have a community that has a high unemployment rate, we got a company that wants to put a plant in, and we go through this labyrinth of Albany Municipal Code, Albany Development Code, Section 120.140-8A, and it's just nuts.
I'm sorry that you weren't at the public hearing to be able to hear the testimony...
Well, I watched it, okay?
Okay, but Tom, there is other buildings for sale that's in the proper zoning for a redemption center, so I just want to clear that up.
Well, if you would, if you're interested in bringing business here, maybe your economic director would tell this company where those properties are, so they might look at them and make a decision, or rather, they might pursue that, okay? That might be helpful, because I hear that we're interested in bringing business and jobs to the community, but then I look at the decision that was made on 12th of February, and then, and then tonight, and it just doesn't hold water.
Well, if the redemption center, if Stephanie would like to know of other buildings, I will personally take her around and show her then. But we can't do stuff like that before a decision is to be made over a land use decision. We have to stay silent on that. Kate, did you have something to state on that? I've on the dais.
Thank you, I just wanted to respond. Can you hear me okay?
Not barely.
Okay, I'll lean forward more, because I can't with the mics. I'm Kate Porcha, Economic Development Director for the city. I actually have it on my calendar for tomorrow to contact Stephanie and talk to her and see how we can be of service and help her find a location that would meet the current zoning. The community development director and myself have been in contact about what zones would work for her, but as the mayor stated, I needed to hear and understand what the final decision was on this item tonight before I could move forward with contacting her, but it's absolutely on my radar, and I think what we heard from the testimony and the folks here was that we do want their business here in Albany, just not in that location. Thank you.
Properly zoned, mm-hmm. Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Cordier. Anything, any other item?
Your honor, could I just make a comment? I would say, Tom, what you said, first of your comments about our public notice is just not right. It's interesting you say that because the neighbors in that neighborhood, we're all here, and they spoke, and they spoke loud. So if they know, then someone else, you know, and so our public notice is, has not changed in years, and apparently, if we have land use hearings or anything like that, people who are involved in it know, they read it, and they come. You can't say, well, just because I didn't know, you know, you just, we've done it right, and I don't think that, for one thing, I don't think there's anything that we're going to do that's going to please you totally, but the neighbors knew about it, they came and voiced their opinions, so the business people had the same chance, we're not playing favorites or anything like that, and so basically what you said about it not being adequate doesn't hold water.
Pessy, I watched the entire meeting on television.
Good, I'm glad.
And there was something like five people who all testified, no, they don't want the business.
Right. How many businesses were here?
And, pardon?
There weren't any, you know, the business people had the same...
And two of them, and two...
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying that everyone has the same opportunity because it's advertised.
Sure.
Okay, anything else, any other items?
Correct, Mayor. There is a difference between if you're giving it to the property owner, and the property owner is gone right then, that's not given to the business.
That's true.
It is given to the property owner. So if people from, I don't know, 12 blocks away got the notice, they would certainly know, or if a councilman or someone called them and said, hey, this is happening, you might want to come deal with it, they'd know. But they wouldn't know if they're just a business who is renting property. That's, you know, and I think that's what he was talking about, I'm not sure, but it sounded to me like that's what he was talking about.
But there is signage put as a public hearing coming up on the Salvation Army.
Exactly.
So, which is across the street.
It's not any different than the old East End.
Okay, Jim, begin.
My better judgment says shut up, but that never works. Notice is a creature of state law in land use. Land use is a highly formalized process, and I understand, Mr. Cordier, that in some cases it will seem Byzantine depending on your perspective, but we don't, the city council doesn't get to make the rules about what the land use process is. Let me finish, and then you can tell me where I'm wrong. But the state law sets up in quasi-judicial land use processes an entire statutory procedure. I understand that, first of all, our notice requirements equal or exceed state law in every sense. We could do more, the problem is... The problem is, when you start departing from state law to try to do more, then you get people who are on the other side of the more, who said, well, I didn't get the notice, and I didn't get the notice. And then, pretty soon, the hearing is derailed because of people arguing that they didn't get the notice. Historically, back in the days when we had a lot of land use before the recession, we didn't have a shortage of people participating. So, there was substantial evidence, anecdotally, that people generally do become aware of land use actions proposed in their area. So, the statutory procedure is what we follow. It has generally worked and gotten broad public interest and public notice. And while I certainly understand the desire to do more than what the law requires, the problem is, then, you start having to comply with all of these niceties you've laid on yourself, and we can't meet the 120-day time clock that we're required to meet. It's kind of a damned if you do, damned if you don't.
I understand it's difficult. I do. But Rich's point, I think, is the point. And it's a highly formal process, and a lot of people don't want to come, they'll give their opinion. One of the questions I have for the council is, did any council member in Ward 1 go to that area and ask the businesses, knowing?
You couldn't legally do that.
You can't do that.
You cannot legally do that.
Is that right?
It's an ex parte. And here's the reason. The city council acts with two different hats. One is they act like a legislature. You can go out, and everybody can come to your office and lobby you, and talk to you about this and that, and you can go out and take a survey. But the other role that they act in, in land use matters, is they act like a court. Now, if you were going to have a trial in front of a judge or a jury, you wouldn't want to think that without your knowing about it, the judge or the jury had visited the neighbors and asked what they thought about your issue.
Sure.
And so, in quasi-judicial land use hearings, the council is governed by a whole set of very structured rules, once again, which I know can be difficult. They're difficult for the council, as well as the audience, but they can't gain that kind of information. They have to base it on just what comes before them in the record.
But does that happen, Jim, after, do the same rules apply before the judicial, quasi-judicial hearing is dated, when that's going to happen? The same rules apply before the hearing, as after?
If, yes. If you are aware that there is a land use matter pending, you're having an ex parte communication when you go, when you receive information from only one side of the story. An ex parte communication in and of itself does not void a decision, but it places a burden on the counselor to disclose the entire substance of everything they learned, and that's difficult, and it's to be discouraged, because you want the people who attend the hearings to have the maximum degree of confidence that the process was fair. And the problem is, if counselors get information on the side, well-meaning information, but information from their own investigations on the side, the other guy in the audience who has a different point of view does not have a high degree of confidence that the counselor has fully and fairly disclosed everything he heard in that private meeting. And so, that's the same reason why you wouldn't want judges going out and getting that separate information. And it's because the legislature has imposed on local governments this quasi-judicial role in certain kinds of land use action. And I'm not surprised that it seems unusual to a lot of us and to people in the audience, because during this recession, since 2008, we have had very few quasi-judicial land use decisions. Back in the time period of around 2005, they were all the time. Meetings would go to midnight with literally 100 people in the audience testifying. That day will come again, and so, it's going to be good for all of us to bone up on those rules again. But I understand your frustration, and I will tell you that every person on the dais here, from time to time, feels handicapped and chained by these state regulations.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation.
We didn't disclose if we drive by the location. So, even driving by the site, visit. Yeah. I remember years back before, when Costco came in, I had to submit a, written out everybody's name and address and the content over the Costco issue of every person that contacted me, and it was like 100 people. So, every counselor had to take notes of who all contacted them before we ever had that hearing. So, it's just part of our process.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anyone else from business from the public? Yes, Mr. Clausen. Anything new this evening, Mr. Clausen?
It's always new. It's always new. Is that some kind of shot?
Maybe you think that's new.
Is that some kind of shot? Jim Clausen, 1403 15th Street. I know you love me, and I love your shots. Like Tom, I'm concerned about overregulating and driving away business, especially overregulating. And I was looking at the public notice meeting, and noticed that they have an updated physical force plan for Lynn County. And one of the things I don't think we should be regulating so much, especially through outside committees, is our police force. I think they do a fantastic job with what they have, and under the regulations and rules that they do have, most of them are very, most of the officers are very conscientious and do a great job. What worries me about this updated physical force plan is that, should an officer have an incident, or he's got some violent offender that he's shot, or taken care of physically in some form, and then he's got to worry about helping the guy. I think that that should be, I don't think that's something that we should be regulating or making rules about. I think that that should be up to the, totally up to the discretion of the officer. I can just imagine the lawsuits on something like that, if somebody determines, well, shoot, he should have helped him, and the guy died or something, or he had some kind of a physical limitation because of the incident. All that does is tie the hands of police officers, giving them more things to worry about when they've got a tough enough job as it is. To tell them what they have to do in a particular incident, when the ordinary person, especially the ordinary person on these committees, really doesn't have any idea what they go through out there. You're talking about life and death situations out there, and then expecting the guy coming out of a life and death situation to make decisions and have to worry about helping somebody, that's, it's a ridiculous thing to put on the shoulders of an officer. I think that the so-called update should be, should not be put in place. I think we should leave it up to the officers involved.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else from business from the public? Okay. Not seeing anyone. Okay. Let's see. Council, next on the list is you have adoption of the resolutions, and the first one is over the contract for auditing services for Volt, Carlyle, and Smith, and that's the resolution on page 12. Did you have questions, Stuart?
I did.
Missy?
Yep. I see the amount that Volt, Carlyle doesn't have, but were there other bids? And normally, we see all the bids, you know, listed, and then, you know, so were there other bids?
Yes. We invited proposals from qualified auditing firms to provide our annual financial audit, and we received proposals from six qualified firms. One proposal, however, was received late, so it wasn't included in the consideration. There was a review committee that reviewed the technical aspects of the proposals that were received. Cost was one of the elements of those proposals, as well as the technical merits of the proposal, and also the professional references from other organizations that use those proposals. So, cost was one of the factors that was included in that initial evaluation. From that initial evaluation, two firms were identified to invite for interviews, and participated in interviews with an auditor review panel again. And the members of the panel included Sue Folden, who is also here tonight, representing that group, and she is the chair of our budget committee and also our audit committee. And then, I participated on the committee, as well as our two senior accountants. And in that review process, Volt, Carlyle, and Smith was selected, or through the scoring process, was ranked the highest both in the technical review and in the interviews that were held. There was a range of costs that were submitted, and that being one of the elements of consideration in the technical review, the costs over the five years, the range between the low and the high was $99,000. So, there was quite a spread in the cost for the five years over the contract.
And so, Volt, Carlyle was high or low?
They were about middle of the pack.
About the middle, okay. Sounds good.
For the cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Move adoption of the resolution.
Okay. This motion is our second, and we'll have discussion.
Second.
Second. Okay. Yeah. Rich?
You say they were in the middle? What was the biggest reason that it was them instead of whoever else was there? Was there one overriding overarching thing, or it was just a whole bunch of things all put together?
Well, as I mentioned, they did achieve the highest score in each of the criteria that we were looking at, so it's kind of a combination of things that were looked at. Each of the proposals was evaluated on, as I mentioned, the criteria that I identified, and then the questions for the interview were the same questions applied to both, and they were, each was ranked individually by the different members of the review audit committee. And I would, I would offer, at least, and Sue could say maybe what persuaded her to give rankings that she gave, the rankings that I gave, were just the confidence that we've had in the work that has been done, in the relationship that our auditors, that the auditors have taken to work with city management in identifying ways to bolster and strengthen internal controls, and address accounting changes or things that we see that are coming down the downstream. They've been very helpful in identifying how to best implement different regulations and rules as they've been brought about. So, the references were very high as well, and one of those references was our experience with them as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Next, this would be the updated fiscal force plan for Lynn County, and I'd like to invite our district attorney, Mr. Doug Artini, to the dais podium. Thank you.
Mayor and city council, thank you. Just to give a little bit of background on what our deadly use of physical force plan is, about six years ago, the legislature passed Senate Bill 111. They required each county to come up with a deadly physical force plan. And five years ago, that committee met, they passed the plan that basically is before you. They wanted to give autonomy to each respective agency, Sweet Home Police Department, Albany Police Department, to incorporate their own policies and procedures, and that's what Appendix A is, is behind there. That hadn't been updated for about five years, however, policies had changed, and so, we decided it was time to update the plan so that it reflects the current policies. The committee met. The committee consists of myself. At the time that this was passed, Sheriff Tim Muller was the co-chair along with me, Lieutenant Dave Mazur from the Oregon State Police, Chief Latanzio was there. Police unions were represented by Detective Pachara from Sweet Home Police Department, a public member, Andy Trower, and a member from the Lebanon Police Department was also invited to participate as well. We met. Everyone submitted their updated policies. The one change that was mentioned earlier in this meeting was also put into the plan. If I could just speak just a moment to that. I, of all people, sympathize with overregulation in government. This was a proposal from the law enforcement officers themselves. They're the professionals, and I certainly trust their judgment. And the names that I just mentioned to you, those were the law enforcement officials that were behind the change that incorporates the duty to also to preserve life. That's a, that proposal is consistent with policies and procedures and nationwide protocols that are in place. It's also consistent with police officers' training. Quick story that shows kind of the wisdom in this as well, and why police officers are trained this way. Police officers have vested interest in making sure that the public looks upon them with, you know, that they're good, upstanding citizens. We just had an officer-involved shooting late last year in this county. It was down by the Brownsville exit, where someone got out of his vehicle, immediately opened the door, and turned, and pointed a gun at a police officer from only nine yards away. At that point, fight and flight kicks in, and the training that the officer had kicked in as well. Shots were fired. The person was hit with one bullet that severed an artery, and officers saw that the scene was clear. And the gentleman, or the man, I should say, that pointed his gun at the police officer was now bleeding out on the freeway. It reflected very well on this police officer, who then immediately, after seeing that the scene was made safe, then saved his life. That makes all of law enforcement look good, and it takes a high level of training, certainly. And so, I think for those types of reasons, it makes sense to put that provision in here. And I would, other than that, it's the same plan that we've had for the past six years. So, I'd urge your vote to approve. And I'll field any questions.
Motion?
Second.
Okay. All right. I know we do all hear the word regulation at times, but I call it the people's protection policy, instead of using the word regulations, though. But yeah, I really appreciate all the work that was put into this, and I think it's the first time I've ever seen this kind of, you know, regional-type policy together, and I really appreciate your work on it and working with all of our law enforcement agencies.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Any discussions? Any question? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, council is, we have a long adoption of the consent calendar, and also goes on the back page, too. So, I'll entertain a motion, unless you have any items you'd like to have pulled off this evening for discussion.
I'd like to comment on item five.
Okay.
Number seven.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion for the adoption of the consent calendar?
I'd move that for the adoption of the consent calendar minus, is it four and seven?
Five and seven.
Excuse me, five and seven.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. Let's see. Dick, were you item five?
Yes.
Yeah. That's on page 59.
Yeah. And the problem with consent calendar is that they slide by, and we don't make any comment on it. And the only comment I want to make on item five is that I think we are very fortunate to have Judge Scott, who is our municipal judge, complimenting publicly.
Yep.
Go ahead. I move for the adoption of item five.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? I would just, I think all of us agree, he has just, he's been wonderful for the city, and he's done a wonderful job as our municipal judge.
Having been around so long, I've seen other judges. He's, we're very fortunate to have him.
Yes, we are. Okay. So, this is a motion for adopting item five, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. Okay. Next is item seven, and that would be on page 61. And Bill?
I just wanted to disclose that Beta Seed is a customer of EC Company where I work. We do electrical work for them. It's not in my department, and I'm not involved in it. And I discussed this with the city attorney, so there isn't any conflict of interest, but I just wanted to disclose that.
Just again, to clarify the record, Councilor Coburn did discuss this with me. Neither he nor his company has a direct pecuniary benefit in this particular vote. It's a benefit to a customer, but that's a step beyond what I think constitutes an actual conflict of interest. I advised him to treat it as though it were a potential conflict of interest, in which case he would disclose it, which he has done, and then he is not privated for voting, in my judgment, based on my advice.
Yeah. No, I have been out there and toured their plant and toward their, the expansion of it, and it is just quite the operation. It's just amazing what the process is, that I think we take for granted when you can just buy a certain seed. There is quite the, the timing process, and soils, and all of that, but it's, it's quite the business out there, and I think we're real fortunate to have it. It's not right in Albany, but it just, it borders us, so, yeah, they've been great, great, growing business out there.
Seed is a big deal around here.
Oh, yeah, and they're, they're global, sell all over the world.
Yeah, this is one of those issues, the enterprise zone that Amadek and John Pascon, who's in the back of the room, spends a lot of time on during the course of the year. We don't see a lot of the things they have in behind the scenes, but they invest a lot of time, a lot of effort, to ensure that people are aware of all the potential benefits so they can build businesses in this community. So I appreciate Amadek's work.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second, all right. Need more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And, okay, so next would be a ward of bid, and this is on page sixty-eight. This would be for water lines for Ferry, Jefferson, and Thurston Streets. Mark, did you have anything to say on this item?
Nothing in particular to add, unless you have questions. You will note on page sixty-nine, the project's estimated to be slightly over budget. However, I want, by fifteen thousand dollars, I want you to know that includes a ten percent contingency that won't be used unless we have change orders. Generally, we don't have change orders, that volume or quantity, so I anticipate this project actually will come in within budget.
Okay. Counsel, what would you like to do with the item?
The ward of bid is recommended on page sixty-eight.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, Bill, excuse me, wait. Yeah, Bill?
Just one comment. I know there's always lots of discussion about, gee, do we get local people involved in specific excavation, while they have offices in other cities as well, certainly have an office here in town. I was just curious, looking here, there's four contractors from Salem, one from Stateon, Eugene, Philomath, Washington, so they come from all over, but this time it was somebody from Albany.
The good news is they're hungry, they're coming to town.
Anything else? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next, business from the council, and Floyd, I think you had an item you were going to bring forward.
I do. I would like to request the council to reconsider the motion that we made on Monday, really to the pending civil penalty proposed to the city manager. And this is a seventy-five dollar fine for supposedly violation of election laws. You know, the issue is not the seventy-five dollars, and, and when, on Monday, we talked about, you know, the council would stand behind it, and we would pay it on behalf of the city manager. Going home that night, and subsequent to that, I've had discussion with several people, and I've had a discussion with the city attorney. And while I think the, the approach that we took is partially the right approach, I think what I would like to do is have us take a look at a two-pronged approach. One is the action we took with the motion to approach our elected officials and have them work it through either the legislative process, or having the legislature, a legislative member work with the Secretary of State to address the underlying rule. The second is to go ahead and authorize the city attorney to file on behalf of the city for a contested case. I believe that, my concern is that the Oregon Administrative Rules and the adopted guidance manual for the implementation of ORS two sixty-four thirty-two goes beyond the scope of the intent of the statute itself. As Jim pointed out, the statute's like two, two and a half paragraphs long, three paragraphs, but the guidance manual's thirty-nine pages. And I believe that as written, the guidance manual may infringe upon the freedom of speech as guaranteed in the Constitution. And thirdly, I think that without some clarification and amendment to the election laws, if left unchallenged, it will be a detriment to this city and all other cities in the future in our attempt to get factual information to the public, to inform them of what the issues are that they're going to be voting on. In the conversation with the city attorney, one of my concerns on Monday was addressed, and that was, he indicated that the potential fee for challenging this was five to twenty thousand dollars. He has indicated that he is willing to do that free of charge for the city. I think that is an exceptional offer on behalf of Mr. Delapore and his firm, but I think it goes to address the underlying issue of the concern for the protection of our constitutional rights. Having dealt with state agencies, I know that administrative rules are drafted by staff members, and sometimes staff members take liberties that go beyond the intent of the underlying state statute, and I think this is probably one of those cases. So Jim has drafted a resolution that is, I'll pass out, that would authorize him to file a contested case on this, and we will continue to work through our elected officials to see if we can do something in the interim before the next legislative session, or if necessary, at the next legislative session. Had a brief conversation with Representative Olson today. He's concerned with the issue. He took nearly a page of notes, and he is going to be contacting the Secretary of State to at least initiate the process at that end. So with that, I would like to have reconsideration of the motion we passed on Monday and review of the resolution, and I'd be glad to give people a few minutes to read the draft, although it is handed out.
Okay, any question? Does that mean at this point, then, if we go down this process, we basically do not pay the fine and let it go through this dual process?
I guess I'd ask Jim to, excuse me, to address that, but that's my understanding is, you don't pay the fine and then file a contested case. You file a contested case, the fine goes in advance until the decision is reached.
Okay, so, yeah, Rich?
I don't have a problem with this with, with one codicil, and that, that is, that I, it's my understanding that there was a meeting with the Secretary of State last year, staff members, and that some notes were taken, and the fact, it's my understanding that the Secretary of State kind of asked us if we have a problem to take this method without being adversarial, or without feeling adversarial, I guess. And I would like to have that confirmed, that she asked, if you have a problem, you can, and the, you can contest it, and the feeling that people in the room got at that point was, that was to be looked upon favorably.
So, I'm not quite clear on what you're, you're talking about the meeting we had.
I can tell you what, what my recollection is of the conversation and what my notes from that meeting reflect. The note, the meeting was the mayor, city attorney Kate Portia, and myself, with the Secretary of State and her then Elections Director Steve Trout, at the Secretary of State's office in Salem. We went to discuss this very, these very concerns, the concerns that have landed us where we are today. As a result of that, we explained our concerns about being unable to get meaningful information to people who need it, when they need it, about, concerns about our First Amendment rights to free speech as public employees and human beings in our spare time, and the Secretary of State said, "Challenge the statute, I'm serious." She said we should have a conversation with the ACLU and their volunteer lawyers. She also said that she had appointed an advisory group that would change the Oregon Administrative Rules before the 2014 election cycle, and we haven't seen any evidence of that. But those are her words. She said, "Challenge the statute."
Then, I agree.
I'm sort of the subject of some of this.
You don't count.
Well, at least I want to put in my two cents, if I may. First of all, as has been, as Councilor Collins pointed out, the amount of the fine is not the issue before us. The question is, you know, being able to share information with the public about issues that are, the public is going to vote on, and what, what are the limits for the city? It's interesting, I've had now three complaints filed against me for violating, allegedly violating election law. Not a single one of those complaints has been upheld, but it was in the review of the third complaint that the Secretary of State's office found an alleged violation that I hadn't even been accused of. And so, the, the problem here, it's obvious, the public apparently doesn't understand it, because they're filing complaints that are not valid. I apparently don't get it, because I got fined for allegedly violating it, and so if reasonable people who can read the statute can't agree on what it says or what it means, then I think there's pretty good evidence that you need some clarification. And so, I am, I, I too would like to particularly thank our city attorney, who I think is perhaps the best-suited person in the state to, to take on this fight, and I think it's an incredibly generous offer that he's willing to donate his time to do it.
You know, I think, I think there's another issue here, and that is, if the penalty is allowed to continue, and the penalty is a reflection of a citation for violation of the rule, we've already seen some evidence in just the two days since Monday, that members of our community will comment about how our city manager violates the law. And I don't think we can let that stand when there's such a lack of clarity. I think it, long-term, it undermines his credibility in our community, and as the chief administrative officer of this city, it affects the ability of the public to have trust in their local government. So I, I think that we need to challenge on a multitude of points, and I think this represents a good way to do it.
Well, in the interest of full disclosure, Counselor, I did get a ticket once for running a red light about thirty years ago in Salem, so it's not my first attempt.
But that was, that was not a function of your role as the City of Albany CEO.
As your city manager.
So I, with that, I would move adoption of the resolution that was...
We have to, the motion, we got to reconsider, make a motion to reconsider, our Monday motion. Did you just make that motion?
Yes.
Okay, and that's reconsider, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that part? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, all right, now...
All right, with that, I'd move adoption of the resolution distributed on the dais this evening.
A second.
Okay, any discussion of the resolution? Okay? All those in favor?
Do we need to have a formal reading, so the public has a clue to what it is that we're, what?
I, I don't think that, I don't think we need to, but I don't think it would hurt.
Okay. Want me to read it, or do you want to read it?
There's a motion to reconsider if we were, or if we did what we did.
On Monday.
Yeah, and this, then we'll replace it.
Bringing it back up for discussion and reevaluation, which you did, which means now it frees you to adopt this, or not, as you wish.
Okay, so, if you want, I can read that resolution.
I think...
We can read it in sections all the way down through the dais if you want.
I'd say go ahead, and for the public's benefit, I think it's important.
Okay, so this resolution authorizing and directing the city attorney to contest a proposed civil penalty against city manager Wes Hare stemming from an alleged violation of ORS two point, two six oh point three, four three two, whereas on or about February twentieth, twenty fourteen, city manager Wes Hare and the city of Albany received a notice from the Oregon Secretary of State advising of a proposed civil penalty to be assessed against city manager Hare stemming from an alleged violation of ORS two six oh point four three two, and whereas a proposed civil penalty stems from actions of the city manager which were undertaken pursuant to express city council direction, and whereas the city council directed the city manager to announce to the public the council decision to involve members of the public in developing plans for the new fire and police stations, and whereas the, for said actions by the city manager did not, in the judgment of the council, constitute or require advocacy as prohibited by statute, and whereas the city manager has not requested or sought in any fashion the assistance of the city attorney, which is authorized by this resolution, and whereas an acceptance without appeal of the proposed civil penalty will, in the judgment of the council, have a significant and undesirable chilling effect on the willingness of city staff and others within the scope of ORS two six oh point four three two, by unlawfully limiting their free speech, precluding them from sharing factual and technical information with the city council and the public, reducing the volume of quality of information that can be, ultimately be provided to the public when future city measures are pending for voter consideration, and whereas this action is taken exclusively for the benefit of the public and not for the private benefit of city manager Hare, and whereas any incidental benefit that the city manager could be deemed to receive from this action is hereby determined by the council to be authorized compensation, and whereas the city attorney has expressed a willingness to bear the cost of the contested case proceeding and subsequent appeals, if any, without charge to the city. Now therefore be it resolved that the city attorney is hereby authorized and directed to contest the civil penalty proposed for assessment against city manager Wes Hare under the circumstances set forth in the recitals above and is further authorized in the event of an adverse ruling to prosecute and appeal thereof to the Court of Appeals of the State of Oregon, should he determine the appeal to be meritorious? You got, that's a new one on me, Jim. And should be, he be willing to continue to provide legal representation in this matter without cost to the city. Be it further resolved that the recitals set forth above are incorporated as facts in this resolution, date and effective this twenty-sixth day of February twenty fourteen.
And Mayor, if I can explain, a lot of what's in the resolution is technical. The purpose that it is there for is to express what Councilor Collins, I think, has eloquently said so far, which is that the action that you are authorizing, and the work that I am willing to do, is, with all due respect, not for Wes Hare. It is to try to relieve staff and other volunteers who would be subject to this statute from fear that by doing their best to provide factual information, they will be subject to being charged with election law violations, going through the process of governmental scrutiny, and ultimately held up to a certain degree of public censure, even in the event of a nominal fine. If that kind of circumstance is allowed to stand, you will find yourself in situations where the voices that the public will hear will be the least informed, and I think that's important enough from a city perspective, that I'm willing to spend my time doing it. I don't know what the outcome will be, but I would think that any outcome will have to give us more clarity and certainty than we have now, in which case, this is one of those few circumstances where even if I lost, I think we would be better off, because we would have some clear direction, which we, in my judgment, don't have now. Again, a lot of the legalese that's in the resolution is to try to, to protect Mr. Hare from any kind of suggestion that he is getting an improper benefit from my services or from the assistance of the council. I think that the recitals make it clear, along with Councilor Collins' comments, that that is not the motion. Nobody's doing this to save Mr. Hare seventy-five dollars, especially since the council was proposing to pay that themselves tonight.
And I'll mention again, as I did on Monday when we discussed it, it was very unfortunate for all of us, you know, on the dais, when we were, as elected officials, to try to be able to explain the measures that were put, you know, placed in front of the voters, and we were personally, I was personally told that I was lying, publicly that was out, that I was lying, and I could not use our city staff to back it up, and that is not right. So when we're out there giving the facts, but staff has to be silent, so it's basically, we're the ones trying to be the voice when it comes to a measure, and, and then we get people that will be accusing us that we're not telling the truth, but you can't use any, you know, staff to back us up on that, and it's just not right. And it's not fair to the voters, too. The voters need to be able to get the facts out there, and, and that, to me, that's, you know, better decision-making when it comes to voting is to really get the... we're the ones trying to be the voice when it comes to a measure, and, and then we get people that will be accusing us that we're not telling the truth, but you can't use any, you know, staff to back us up on that. And it's just not right. And it's not fair to the voters, too. The voters need to be able to get the facts out there. And, and that, to me, that's, you know, better decision-making when it comes to voting is to really get the, you know, get the factual information. And it's unfortunate when hands are tied from folks that are in the positions to really know what the facts are, that have to be silent. And that's not fair to the voters, in my opinion.
Well, and the other thing, Your Honor, is that no one is suggesting that staff would engage in advocacy. No one is suggesting that staff should be telling people how to vote. In fact, even the Secretary of State's office didn't say that Mr. Hare had done that. They said that the violation was be, a technical violation, that if you put in a dollar amount of the measure, you're supposed to put in a cost per thousand to the taxpayer. Not that it was advocacy. But the statute itself speaks in terms of advocacy. So I, I, I share the concern that there is a disconnection between the statute and the administrative rule as it is being interpreted, although my concerns run even deeper than that. But no one is suggesting here, and I will not be arguing, that staff should be advocating on the public expense for or against measures before the voters.
Right. It's just what has taken place with those rules is ma, it's made it so subjective of what can they say? And that's what needs to be clarified, so. Okay, so anything else on that resolution? So with that, we have a motion, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. All right, that was it, Floyd.
Yes.
You had, okay, so Rich, did you have anything this evening?
I said it before.
Okay.
I, I guess I would reiterate, my concern, when it comes to the Main Street system, is that viewed from the outside, we are pushing a business away who was wanting to put a million bucks in town, or eight hundred thousand or something. The only thing that'd be worse, as far as I'm concerned, is if we then, in a week or a month or something, gave them, gave somebody Pepsi funds to help them go in there. Or Kara gave them money to go in there. I mean, it's just, I think it's the wrong message.
Okay, Ray, do you have anything?
Well, picking up on Rich's point, I think at the root of the concern that Rich has expressed is the underlying zoning that's been in place for eighteen or nineteen years. And if, if we have difficulty with enforcing the zoning that's currently adopted, then we need to go back and modify the underlying zone. And we generally do that when we do periodic review and we look at the zoning throughout the city. Or we initiate a process to consider a zone change for a larger area. But that is a non-specific applicant process. We, we can initiate that to take a look, and whether that should be a Main Street or a Village Center, and maybe it should be neighborhood commercial or something else. But that's the underlying question, and I think that's how to get to the root of the question that you're talking about.
And I, I understand. I guess my, my issue is, you know, it doesn't make any difference whether we're right or wrong. The public and business outside gets whatever view they get of it by the information that they happen to have available. And if it looks bad in their eyes, they think it's bad. It doesn't make any difference if they're right or wrong. It's, any rumor then becomes truth. And, you know, you can't fight that.
And, and what we didn't say in that, and I mean, it is confusing to folks when it comes to, you know, land use issues. And, but that's, it's just like what Counselor Collins meant. We went through a big process when it comes to periodic review and setting up our comp plan, and we go through a huge public process and getting input, how do you want Albany to grow? What do you want it to look like in the future? So that's where you set that zoning. So the time they usually demand to change the rules of a zoning would be as if you don't have any inventory left for particular use to go into in Albany, then you consider changing that zoning. In this situation, the redemption center, there was plenty of other buildings that are for sale in the community commercial and regional commercial zoning that they could have looked at. So if we are to change our rules for every use that wants to not comply, then why do we have a comp plan? So that's where we have to look at, you know, sticking with that comp plan, this is what, this is how we want our community to grow and look. But, you know, when it comes to, if that's the Main Street zoning, if that's something that citizens don't think we should have, then that's where you go through your comprehensive plan update and go through that periodic review process again. But we had a lot of input years back in the late nineties that we went through in establishing that comp plan. It's probably up for periodic review again, I would imagine, and that's something that Mark will have to probably take the lead on, and it's a multi-year process going through each one of our, you know, statewide planning goals. But we are probably due to start, start back up that process again. And you want to have meetings? I tell you, when it comes to periodic review and updating those goals, that's lots of meetings, but it is a fun process to go through. But no, that's, that's, you know, the base to that piece, but. Okay, anything, Bessie, anything this evening?
Well, I just wanted to bring something up. It was, I was reading the city bridges, and there were actually article in there regarding our grocery carts all over town. Years ago, we passed an ordinance, and, so that it would take care of getting the unsightly grocery carts off the streets and out of the rivers and streams and whatever. And so I'm just wondering, it's, it looks, it sounds like it's not working too well, and I just wondered if anyone had any update on what, what, you know, what really is going on? Because I see just as many now as I used to, and I'm thinking, I remember at the time, I thought, why pass an ordinance when you're not going to be able to enforce it? But I just wanted to know what's happening with that.
It is a good question, because I was almost wondering if we should have maybe an update at a work session or something and go back and look at that ordinance to see if there is something that we're missing that we could have been able to have more enforcement on that. Do you remember, Marilyn, why we're still dealing with that?
The chief might be able to enlighten us that the-
Yeah.
He's pointing at me. The Community Resource Unit is doing some very aggressive enforcement recently. That's why the story was in city bridges. The police department's been putting out a lot of information about the, the ordinance giving people the phone numbers to call, encouraging them to call, and if the, the stores don't pick, some of the, a lot of the stores contract with, with businesses that retrieve shopping carts for a living. That's just what they do. Others don't. You call the store directly, and they're responsible for it. If this cart doesn't disappear within seventy-two hours, you call the police department, they make it disappear, and they charge the, the business fifty dollars to get it back. We, on one particular day after the special enforcement started, police were out driving around and just eyeballing the community without even doing it on purpose, just when they caught their eye, they would take note of, of where the carts were, and they came up with sixty grocery carts that weren't where they belonged. Eighteen thousand dollars worth of grocery carts-
Wow.
-that were running around loose. So it's, it is a problem, we are working on it, and it's much more aggressively than in the past. It's, it's partially the responsibility of people who live here. You see a cart where it doesn't belong, call. The numbers are all in the city bridges piece, that'll be online for, till the end of time, and they're all available through the police department as well.
Wasn't there a part of the ordinance that said that if you give them, the store's so, so long, and then they're just taken to the dump or whatever? That they're just discarded totally? I mean, I-
I think that's up to the store.
Recycle it.
It wasn't, it wasn't in the, it's not in the ordinance.
I thought, I thought it was at a point where we'd pick them up, and they had so much time to claim them, and if not, then they were gone. So we'll have to look at the ordinance again.
So, so Marilyn, maybe if the code enforcement team can look at the ordinance, if, if it looks like there's more enforcement you need of any language change, then let us know on that. But I think you got our support on, you know, really getting those carts out of there, and if there's something, you know, we can do on changes, let us know. Yeah, okay. Bessie, yeah, Bill, anything?
Yes, Ray and I received an email about starting times for garbage trucks. Has that been discussed yet? So the, the email was, somebody was woken up at six in the morning, the garbage truck's starting to make their rounds, picking up garbage. They thought that was a little early, and I didn't know if you could connect the dots between that and the time construction people can start and delivery trucks at construction sites and so forth. I didn't know if that's something council wants to have staff look into.
The only thing I can say is that we used to get complaints in La Grande because they started at four-thirty. The council was reluctant to change that. We're not getting a lot of complaints on this issue. And it's been, I think, past practice here for many, many years that they collect that We can certainly look at it, but it doesn't seem to be a, a big concern for most citizens, unless you're getting, is it just one person that's complaining, or is it-
Yes, no, just one. But if nothing else, I'd like to know what rules of operation they do operate under. In other words, they may have some internal guidelines that, gee, we shouldn't have been out there by six, sorry it happened, or, yeah, we do start at six, or-
Catch some insight on this.
They have extensive policies and rules about when they start and where they start and why, and why they do it. Kevin Hines, and I discussed this at a meeting the day you got the complaint, and he would be happy to come and explain to you why they do the way, things the way they do. They start, there are rules that they don't pick up any cans before six. And they make those rules based on, on years and years and years of trying different schedules and, and trying to make things work for the majority of the community, and depending on when the streets are clear or cars, and it's a, it's a very complicated process, but-
I'd be interested to hear that, only because when you're contacted by a constituent on a, whatever the issue, why are my water rates so high and so forth, that, you know, I draw on that knowledge to be able to explain to them, and I'm happy to say that the majority of the time, they appreciate the information, they understand the, they didn't understand, didn't know, didn't have the information, now they do, and that takes care of it, so. But I had no idea what to tell.
I can certainly ask Kevin to come to a work session, if you like.
They're, they're very responsive. In fact, they had some complaints during the recent snowstorms, they were not able to get all the trash receptacles on the normal dates, and I think they even gave credits to people, and they made extra provisions, and I thought they really went out of their way.
Then, Mayor, if I might suggest, perhaps Mr. Hines could, perhaps staff could ask Mr. Hines to respond to the counselors who've had the comment, perhaps with an email, he could explain that one issue. In terms of council authority, though, you have a franchise, and you go through terms of the franchise, when you renew the franchise. If it's something that after the council hears about it, you want to revisit in franchise discussions, you can. It may not be serious enough to rise to the level for discussion, but that's your call. But that is legally how you could get it into the, have input on their rules. There's not anything we really could do about it right now, because it's within the current franchise term.
Is our, does our noise ordinance address the starting time for construction projects? As an example, is it set seven o'clock?
Instruction, yes.
Yes, it's seven.
Seven AM.
You know, we do, our noise ordinance does not address incidental noise from vehicle traffic.
I understand.
If the swan man comes by, or the mailman, or the UPS driver, or the school bus, our ordinance is completely silent on those things. In addition, the concern would be if we adopted a, a noise standard that was only applicable to the garbage trucks, it could be deemed to interfere with the franchise rights that we have already given in our, in our ordinance, our franchise ordinance. So I would think that it would be something we would review when we periodically revisit those terms of franchise. But there's no reason, if the council wanted, I'm sure you could have input with the franchisee if you wish.
I, this doesn't need to get blown out of proportion, I'd just maybe hear from Kevin and understand a little more about what they do.
Would you like me to ask him to email you directly, you and Ray, or the whole council will email me, I can distribute it to you, whatever you like.
Anything else, Bill?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, all right, Dick, anything?
Yeah, I want to say that I really appreciate, appreciate our city staff protecting the neighborhood, which is part of my, part of my Board One consideration. The, to my way of thinking, zoning and planning, it shouldn't be an effort to necessarily maximize the amount of businesses we have in the city. I think it ought to be to allow, I'd like to say it allow everyone to live in that great neighborhood that we talk about. And in order to have a great neighborhood, you have to have a gradation between the annoying businesses and the annoying commercial, and the hopefully great residential neighborhood. What are you going to do in that margin between the two? You try and put something in there that will be compatible with the people who are trying to lead a, a happy life that our Declaration of Independence talks about. So I want to, I want to thank our city staff for sticking up for the neighbors and writing up the appropriate kind of findings that will give us the chance to approve the zoning that we did. So thanks, Mark.
I appreciate that. We wrote the findings according to council's direction. Yeah, our goal is to, to enforce the zoning as the council has adopted and interpret the land use regulations correctly and consistently.
Yep, all right, and I didn't have anything this evening. And Wes?
I just wanted to commend Mark's department again. The public works on the ten bids that we've received for the water lines on Ferry Jefferson and Thurston Street. Reflects a, a good job of getting the word out. And we received a number of, of bids, the, the range was pretty narrow, the low bid was within shouting distance of the engineer's estimate, actually, the engineer's estimate was a little bit higher than the low bid, and it just, I think in general reflects some good work on, on the part, the, part of the engineers who were involved.
Okay, great. Yep, many staff?
I have a suggestion from all this discussion we've had about the land use decision that was before you today. We were planning to have a training session for the Planning Commission and the Landmarks Advisory Commission on land use, kind of going over, here's, here's the background and Albany's zoning districts, things about how do you make decisions, ex parte contacts, and, and as, as Mr. Delapo pointed out, it has been a long time since the counselors who have gone through that complicated process, it's been a long time since you've done that, and we have some counselors who have not gone through that process until maybe tonight. So I would, if council is interested, would like to invite you to come to that training, and if there is an interest, we'll probably reschedule, because it was coming up in, in about two weeks, and I think it'd be best to give you a little time to get it on your calendars. But if there's interest from council, I think that could be very positive, at least you'll get the process. Now, land use is complicated, that doesn't mean everyone's going to understand every result, but at least you can be comfortable with why things are being done and refreshed on how things are done.
Madam Mayor, consistent with that, I was interested that Mr. Cordier was very understanding, initially very critical of the notice concern. When the constraints of the law were explained, he reasonably understood them, and it's, I'm wondering, and I haven't given this any thought, it's a manager issue, but rather than having some special meeting, what if an hour of a council meeting was devoted to having these discussions, so that it was televised, and so that the people who would usually attend our council meetings might also get a refresher to understand why you are under the somewhat rigorous constraints you're under? So if we did it, I, I'm just simply suggesting that it would be more structured perhaps, but by having it televised, there's a chance that the people who will be critical of you for following the rules might understand the constraints.
You can put that on a loop on the TV, our TV station, too, so it's out there-
Well, you know, that is another thing, we could do it outside of a meeting and simply record it, except I think you get some people who attend, as you wish.
By doing it in PowerPoint, might be kind of nice to have it on the TV, explaining the process, you know, somebody just reading it and doing maybe a PowerPoint might- You know, somebody just reading it and doing maybe a PowerPoint might help, too.
Well, it'll be somebody other than me, then, because not only do I not do PowerPoints, but the notion of-
Yeah, well, if-
Somebody on TV reading a screen strikes me as a certain-
If council would like to do that as, as part of a regular meeting, you just need to identify that meeting. We'd also want to coordinate with the Planning Commission and Landmarks Advisory Commission to, to make sure most of them are available for that time. And my, my hope would be that while the training would be here, if you have it at a council meeting, that the Planning Commission would be able to interact some way with that, ask questions and things like that as you move through, just as council would, would be able to.
All right, okay, anything else, Mark, Marilyn, staff?
No, I just, just some direction. Should we, should we look for doing this during a council meeting? Or do you want us to set a separate meeting date? What I'm hearing is there's interest. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do you have a preference whether it's done at a regular meeting, or do you want to go to another meeting?
I think probably make it as a special meeting, because if you're inviting the Planning Commission members, it, you know, there could be a lot of dialogue taking place, so it would, it's, it could be quite lengthy meeting.
But it could be televised, then, so you'd have to arrange for staff to be able to run the equipment and do that.
You could televise it unless, well, maybe think about that part if you want to televise it on PowerPoint.
We can figure out logistics.
If we're going to do a special meeting on this, it just, I, I would like to have a little more time to prepare it. It's, the, the degree of formality is going to go up a little bit with this larger audience and putting it out for repeat viewing. But, but I share the goal of getting everybody, I think it's really helpful if all of the players can hear the same information at the same time, can hear questions and hear answers, so that we're all on the same page.
All right.
Okay, we'll work to, I'll work with Marilyn, we'll try and find a date or two for you to consider that.
Okay, all right, so our next meeting date would be a work session March 10th, a regular session is March 12th. And we want to thank you folks for attending this evening, and with that, we adjourn.